Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website at WCSOH.org. Click on the district link, then select Board of Education, then Board Docs, and select This Evening's Meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening. The first being Agenda Item 6.01, the first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 12.02. Please state the agenda item you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.01. There is a sign-up sheet located in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Mr. Velardo?
Here. Will you please stand and join us in the pledge to allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're excited, we're always excited when we have a district recognition, a highlight, and this one concerns the Boy Scouts of America. Mr. Byrd is very passionate about Boy Scouts, has been involved in a long time, and so I would like Mr. Byrd to make these introductions.
Absolutely. This evening, we will be having the board form a receiving line and hand out certificates from resolutions and pins, which I believe we'll be receiving one this time. So I'd like to call up, from the Arrowhead District of Simon Kenton Council, Boy Scouts of America, Jack Lake, the Arrowhead District Chairman. If you could please come forward to the podium and introduce the rest of your team.
First, thank you for allowing us to be here with you this evening. As Mr. Byrd said, I'm Jack Lake. I am the Arrowhead District Chairman of the Simon Kenton Council Boy Scouts of America. We serve Westerville, New Albany, and Northeast Columbus, so encompassing the entire Westerville School District. Before we present you with an award of recognition, please allow us to share some success stories on the partnership between scouting and the school district. To do this, I have with me Jenny Quartz, who's a venturing scout and a sophomore at Westerville South. I have Ryan Hensley, who is a life scout in the Boy Scouts, sophomore at Westerville North. I also have with me Aiden Gonzalez, a Cub Scout with PAC 966 at Mark Twain, and also Max Fassel, a Cub Scout with PAC 966 at Mark Twain.
There are over 800 students in Westerville schools in all levels of scouting, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and venturing. Supporting these scouts are hundreds of adult leaders throughout the community as well. This school district's support of scouting directly benefits the scouts, their peers, the community, and the school district itself. Aside from the values and character that scouting teaches, these scouts perform a great deal of community service.
Over the last three years, Eagle projects alone have totaled 111, with over 13,600 hours, or 1.5 years of service. Some notable Eagle projects include the permanent outdoor classroom at Woody Elementary, the education garden at Genoa Middle School, the animal fence for the garden at Genoa Middle School, the playground activity painting at Longfellow Elementary, the orchestra fronts at Westerville South High School, the outdoor classroom at Mark Twain, which I was gladly a part of, the educational butterfly gardens at Emerson Elementary, and the playground activity painting at Emerson Elementary.
This does not include the hundreds of hours of projects that are done for the schools, like cleaning up the gardens at Mark Twain, and projects to help them celebrate their 40th anniversary.
We would like to thank Westerville North and South High Schools for announcing new Eagle Scouts on the message boards in front of their schools. We also appreciate Dr. Caleb and School Board President Richard Byrd taking time to
I just would like to take a second in making these thanks to give the community a little
sit in our dunk tank at the August 4th Friday to help raise money to support scouting
bit of information. Scouting has gone through a number of changes. If you've not kept up with them, they've made a number of decisions over the last couple
in the community.
of years, and scouting is continuing to grow.
It is our pleasure to present you with this plaque.
It's continuing to be a chartered organization in the United States of America that brings not just boys and young men together, but it is a coed institution.
In recreation of Westerville City Schools' leadership in helping install the values of
I've had the privilege of serving on Arrowhead District staff, serving on Simon Kenton Council Board staff, serving on the National Jamboree staff, and I don't do all that stuff anymore.
the Boy Scout oath and law by supporting and promoting scouting within our schools.
But I've had that opportunity to work in scouting all the way from the very local level as a Cub Master and Assistant Scout Master, all the way up to the national level. It is worth everyone's time to get caught back up with scouting and see where it is today. And Arrowhead District is a strong district. I really truly appreciate what you all do, and I'm glad that we can be in partnership with you. I am the proud father of an Eagle Scout, and I think it's really, really important to note about these Eagle projects. It is expected that the funds that are needed to execute these projects, they must be part of a fundraising plan for the scout themselves. These funds don't come from any other source than where the Eagle Scout sources them from. So it is not just the time and labor that's put into this, but also the treasure that these scouts collect and bring forward from the community. So, thank you again, job well done, much appreciated. It's really an honor to receive an award from you all, and keep up the great job.
Thank you, Richard. We are honored that you'll be here tonight. Thank you very much. We move on to Agenda Item 4.01, the approval of minutes from our regular Board of Education meeting, January 23. We just ask, are there any comments or corrections at this time? Hearing none. Agenda Item 5.01, we have a report, a food service update. Who will be giving us this food service update? Lucky you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We really like hearing from the different organizations within the school system, so thank you. You might want that a little higher.
I do not need it. I kind of have one of those voices.
Well, they record it, though, so why don't you?
I don't know how to do this.
This is your first test, you understand?
I think I just passed.
You did.
How did you?
Thank you very well.
So, President Velardo, members of the board, Mr. Hersheiser, Mr. Griffith, thanks for letting me come to represent food service this evening to give you an update about a project that we kind of started as a concept that was presented to us about serving coffee in our high schools. And this concept has grown into an opportunity, which has kind of led me here this evening. I presented to our executive leadership team in October, and a week later, I had the opportunity to present to parent council. And at the time, it was really about the idea of having coffee available in the high schools, what that would mean, what feedback we would get from the community, parents, professionals. And it has turned into an opportunity to then speak to the superintendent advisory groups at all three high schools. And then the coffee company actually was available for the North and South student advisory groups for sampling, so the students actually had an opportunity to try them. It was a great opportunity for me because the students gave us some feedback, which is how this concept of just offering it turned into an opportunity for an experience for our students and our staff as well. Student feedback largely centered around the cost of the coffee itself or the beverages, and it's not just coffee. I think that's important. I've kind of started to move towards calling it a bistro, because it's where the project is kind of growing. So the cost of the beverages themselves that would be added to the high schools range in cost from $1.50 to $2., so significantly more cost-effective than some of our local establishments. The students wanted access throughout the school day. That was a big deal to them. Right now, our cafeterias are limited to meals, breakfast and lunch, and they're not open around that. They also requested the ability to gain work experience, kind of through, and it was mentioned by Dr. Caleb, these superintendent advisory meetings through like a DECA program or Business Professionals of America program that the district doesn't currently have, but might be looking into. Requested the space be separate from the cafeteria and a unique experience. That was very important to the students at these, all three of these meetings. They didn't want to have to go to the cafeteria necessarily to gain access to these opportunities for them. Then they'd want food items to be served that were similar to local quick-service food establishments. Very specific things that were asked for, bagels with cream cheese and a variety of different flavors of bagels, breakfast sandwiches, similar items. That kind of grew with a discussion of having grab-and-go style items that would be available, salads that can be paired with fresh fruits and vegetables at lunch, even quick paninis, small pizzas, items that would then also qualify for the free and reduced program that some of our students take advantage of, as well as reimbursement that goes back to the food service department through the USDA. Students desire the opportunity to influence menu items, drink flavors and names. That actually became kind of funny, and I'm fully on board with that. It would be very specific to the buildings. Sometimes it reflected an administrator, sometimes it reflected the mascot, sometimes it was just rotten, which was a lot of fun. So where the concept turned to opportunity in December with discussing with the building leadership teams the possible locations within their buildings, equipment selections based upon student feedback, so where they had said that they'd want some of these more unique items available to them that we don't currently have, gave us an opportunity to add some pieces of equipment into our inventory. Field trip, I took the managers at our three high schools to our local surrounding districts that are already doing their coffee bars, or the coffee shops, to see how they work, to get them on board with the idea and get them excited about doing this, to see how it works in other locations, and that it's such a neat experience outside of our normal. And then that it's more than just coffee. The additional serving location, so students who may not currently have access to getting into that cafeteria, waiting in the lines, making those selections, and getting back out and doing what they need to do. We have students who sometimes schedule things during what would be a normal lunch period. Maybe it's an extra study hall, maybe they're working with a teacher, maybe it's orchestra or band, that they're taking advantage of some extra time in that space. So they traditionally may not actually take full advantage of what we have already available. This could potentially be an option for them. Additional opportunities for education and some outreach. I had a teacher who works within our district at two of our high schools reach out to me from the business standpoint, and wanted to know maybe how we could mend a relationship that would allow students to learn about hospitality management, why they're still in school, inventory control, where we get our prices, how we product select. USDA has some wonderful nutrition guidelines that we are required to follow, very strict, but that doesn't mean that we can't do anything fun. And then also, two of our middle schools, I believe, currently are, with our special education department, already doing coffee delivery service. There's a potential that we could also work with those kids who are coming into the high schools and allow them to even gain further opportunity. It would be a requirement that a food service staff member always be within the space, that they're the ones that actually control the money and the point-of-sale systems, that have access to our student accounts, so that the students wouldn't have any of that responsibility. But they would be able to gain a lot of experience related to even the marketing, menu selection, preparation, and inventory controls. And then the revenue that the coffee bars in our surrounding districts are gaining from this is a great opportunity. As you all know, food service is a self-funded department, and our revenues that we do bring in have to continue to support our department. They pay for salaries, they pay for equipment replacement, and sometimes when we have additional revenues, we are required to put those back into our buildings. And we have done that in the last several years, and we'd like to continue to be able to do that, and this is an opportunity to expand those opportunities. Equipment and construction costs would be covered by the food service department and our funds that are set aside in the budget currently for building improvements as well as equipment. So we would not be asking for any general fund dollars in any of the construction or equipment selection surrounding these coffee bistros. We're kind of playing around with some fund names that might go with them, and very unique to each of the buildings, just going along with that whole idea of a unique experience and something that's an added excitement. So who's making it work around us? Reynoldsburg City Schools is already doing this, New Albany Plain Local Schools, Bexley City Schools, which they got Starbucks, you know, that's kind of easy for them, right? But you can see that these are all really great environments. This is Delaware City Schools. In the background, you can also see they have a couple smoothie machines, so that was kind of a fun thing to see working in their environment. And you see their grab-and-go items. So we're still meeting nutritional needs, because you can pair a lot of those things up real quick, and you have an actual reimbursable meal through the USDA, but it's also a nutritionally sound meal for the student. So it's kind of a win-win. What's next in our project is obviously finalizing the locations at the three high schools. As the concept turned into this great opportunity, we really wanted to make it unique. So we are working to locate where the best place in the buildings for that might be. The design and layout obviously needs to be done, staff training still needs to be complete. So we are looking for an implementation goal for fiscal year 18, probably some construction if it needs to be done over the summer, so we're not impending in the school day. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
It looks like an exciting opportunity. I'm just wondering, will there be any staffing needs?
I'm sure there are going to be staffing needs, absolutely, because the food service person needs to be in there. But with the planning and the budget and the cost of those items served, it works within the pricing to have a staff member within that space. Again, food service does pay for all of those, so we wouldn't be asking general funds for any additional staff from that, but we may end up needing somebody added to the food service employment.
Carrie, one of the things I think we need to let everyone know is about the caffeine, so that we actually have the ability to control the amount, which is key. So you want to tell us a little bit about that?
I'd love to. So during the process of discussing coffee, obviously caffeine's a big question about that. Each bean is very unique in the brewing process for caffeine. The product that we are directly looking at is Gordon Food Service. It's Mosaic is the brand name for them, and it is an Italian roast. It has the least amount of caffeine of all the beans that they have available under their inventory. We could also offer decaf if that we felt that was appropriate, absolutely. But minimal caffeine has actually been deemed okay for students, where if you spend any amount of time in a building watching kids come in in the morning, they've already got access to it. So this actually could potentially even decrease the amount. The recipes that the staff will follow, it's a recipe, because each of these beverages has to meet the USDA guidelines for what's offered within the National School Lunch Program in the schools. So every beverage actually has 60 calories or less, and I think that's important to notice versus going to one of our outside places and you look at what they're putting in them, so.
And I would also encourage you to tell them about, and I know lots of staff and teachers are super excited about it, but there was one particularly at North, right, that kind of took off with an idea and some options that could happen?
Yeah, that's the teacher who is actually part-time at two schools, North and Central, and she's the business teacher there. She really, and I actually have an email from her this week, and she's really ready to get it going, what offers for the students and what offerings would apply for college credits as well within this program, allowing them to do some product selection, naming the items, marketing, as well as even the potential to cross-sell items. So we've got these wonderful Fab Labs that are going in, and Emerald Schools have already had that access. Maybe they are making cups, and with the sale of a cup that then goes to their program, the proceeds would go to their program, they get a discounted beverage. Or we could potentially even help the buildings with their booster sales of their spiritware. So those are also being done at the same time and have access to those items as well. And those funds would all go back to the buildings and the programs that's appropriate, not food service.
And I like the idea that kids get to be creative, but are, generate revenue, but the creative part is really what I think is kind of cool, and all the hands-on learning that could take place, so.
And I think it's a neat opportunity to have the students work within the food service department also, to see what we do outside of just school lunch.
Thank you very much.
I'm very, very excited. I mean, I can only speak from the central perspective, but if we have a Spinner Burger, I'm looking forward to a Spinner Chino. I'm expecting that to be on the menu board. But I will say, what's interesting to me about this when we talk about opportunities for kids, we want to, when we look at something like this, it may appear first as something that's frivolous or something that's kind of outside of the norm. First of all, very clear, we have a number of neighboring school districts that have already picked up on this. I was a little surprised, both my oldest daughter and my youngest son have gone to Ohio University, and in the time span between the two of them going, which was a few years, when we walked on campus at Ohio University, the diversity and availability of food service continuously on the campus setting was mind-blowing to me. I was used to the old traditional meal plan, and now there are markets and there are coffee shops, and if you're not using your plan in the traditional setting because you've got class overlap or you've got all those types of issues, now you have different ways to make sure that you're fed and fueled up. I think that's a good comparative in a high school setting, obviously in a much smaller landscape, but I think there's also the reality is we have continued to expand opportunities, educational opportunities for kids. We have kids that are hustling from AP class to Credit Plus, College Credit Plus, or to any number of other activities where the lunch period may not be the neatest fit in their overall schedule to give them an additional option, to make sure that they're getting what they need to be able to be successful at what they're doing, I think is a great idea, so.
We're all in favor of this. It seems like you're moving forward in an appropriate way. A couple, just very quick things. This will be open, still in the process, but you're thinking of a little before school, a little before after school, and throughout the day?
Correct.
That's kind of the, and I know you're working on a timeframe, but that's essentially it.
No, that's great.
And the only reason I say that is because I will hear sometimes comments or frustrations about vending machines not being accessible during this time and this time, and that's just, that just doesn't make sense to me in light of these cafes, back in my day, no, offering some healthy, some healthy items. I mean, I'd love to see baskets of fruit and that kind of thing. That, okay, so I was just checking on that. And the only other thing, and I'm just, I'm just saying this, you take it, massage it, think about it, there are a lot of places that are doing pretty significant work with free trade, fair trade, coffee, et cetera, and I know we have to be about price and we have to be about the caffeine level. I just know of some organizations, ministries and organizations that are doing some really good work and making a social impact as well as, I'm running from IB to AP and I need, I need something. So if you could just put that in your hat and think about that, that would be awesome to just consider.
I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we're good?
Well, I was just going to say, Rick, back in your day, didn't you just have to hunt lunch every day?
That's, you stepped out of the one-room schoolhouse and you had to go find it, right? So many things are coming to mind right now. And with that, I would like to ask for adjourn, no, no, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'll get them back, people. We move, we move on to Agenda Item 6.01, Public Comments. We have no one signed up at this time. To Agenda Item 7.0, Financial Updates, none at this time. And Agenda Item 8, Personnel Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. How about a nice report?
Good evening, President Velardo, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda contains nine sections involving 136 persons. Section 8.01 is the resignation of one classified employee and 30 substitutes. I want to point out that we've been cleaning up the books a bit, and some of these folks haven't subbed in quite a while, and so we've asked them to formally resign. 8.02 is the resignation of one supplemental. 8.03 is the retirement of nine classified employees. And again, we have a couple of ELC employees here who work in this building, and we're sad to see them go. Classified numbers of retirements continue. 8.04 is a contractual status change for 18 classified employees. 8.05 is a leave of absence for four teachers. 8.06 is a change of assignment for three classified employees and two amended items. 8.07 is four additional names to previously approved one-time payments, as well as one new one-time payment for a single teacher. 8.08 is the employment of one classified administrator, and I'd like to give a warm welcome to Amber Kosky, who is here tonight. She'll be replacing Gary Henkels, who's retiring. Amber?
Welcome, Amber. Thank you for being here tonight.
We also have the employment of four classified employees and four substitutes. And 8.09 is the employment of three home instruction tutors, two athletic events assistants, and a variety of athletic positions, as well as one adjustment to a previously approved item.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I, and we do have some people here. We'd like to, Sally, would you like to stand up and wave to us?
Yay!
Sally is retired. Thank you for your service. Although, we haven't voted yes yet, so you, you, you may be stuck at that. And we have a new head football coach at Westerville South. Would you, Michael, would you like to come forward and just introduce our new coach? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Hersheiser, members of the board, Mr. Griffith. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Mike Starner. I'm the principal of Westerville South High School, and I am honored to stand before you and introduce, for the very first time, our new football coach, Mr. Matthew Christ. He comes highly recommended from Granville Heights, and when I spoke to the principal of the school, Ken Chafin, he told me this. He said two things, and he wasn't talking about football. He said, winners just win, and Mr. Christ is the biggest winner I've ever met. And he also went on to say that although our football program will be devastated by his performance, he will be a great player. 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 He will be a great player.
that although our football program will be devastated by his vacancy, we will have a larger hole in our science department and in our school culture at Granville Heights High School. And I think that is unbelievable to say about a young man so thirsty for what's next in his career. So I, I'm honored to introduce to you, Ms., Coach Matthew Christ here at Westerville South High School.
Matthew, welcome aboard. Would you like to say hello to us? And, sure.
Good evening. First of all, my voice is a little messed up at the moment from coaching basketball down at Granville Heights as well, but I just want to say thank you to Mr. Starner, Mr. Weaver, everybody that was a part of the search committee, that they saw in me what I believe I have in me, and that's the, the ability to lead a football program, but more importantly, the ability to lead young men in their pursuit of reaching their full potential. So I'm just happy to be a part of the Westerville family.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Thank you very much. Agenda item nine, policy consent final reading, revised policy 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act. This is our final reading, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who's going to be sharing something about this with us?
That'd be me.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is a, the second reading. Really, the Fair Labor Standards Act is a federal, federal program, federal law. And what we made the change to our policy is we basically eliminated what the per, the weekly, per-week amount is. We put in there, rewrote in the FLSA minimum wage in both places so that in the future, this doesn't have to be amended just because of the dollar figures change. It was a current policy, we just made some corrections to it.
More of an updated?
Yeah, revised.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Bart, please call the roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item 10, recommended action, old business, we have none. Agenda item 11, recommended action, new business, we have none. Agenda item 12, recommended action, standing business, 12.01 donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On us. We are always honored with a tremendous amount of financial donations in addition to a lot of work given to this school district by volunteers and supporters. And as we look through this list, I really, any comment from the board, it is, we are beyond grateful every time, I believe. Anything else?
I would like to say it's nice to see staff and former staff, as well as boosters donating to the district. I think they make a big difference, so.
Thank you. Please call the roll, Bart.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. 12.02, overnight and out-of-state field trips. May I have a motion?
Motioned.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? These are three trips. I'm very excited about apparently a robotics competition. That's a very cool thing, glad to see that. And some key club leadership conference, central baseball team. And we have not been invited to any of these, have we?
We haven't. Worth, worth mentioning, because we talk about the strength of our district as, as a whole, that the trip for the robotics competition is South, North and Central all together.
All three. It's awesome, yes.
And that's just emblematic of the way that we work as a district. I like it.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Please call the roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item 13.01, public comments, we have none at this time. None signed up, excuse me. And agenda item 14.01, board comments. Who would like to begin?
I'll go.
Well, then you may.
I'm all ready. First, I want to look out there and say, you know, welcome to our new staff. We're delighted to have you. And for the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts here, thank you so much for coming. And to our staff, our teachers from Robert Frost, thanks for coming tonight. It's nice to see you. Couple of things I just want to update you on, and if I ever steal your thunder, just say shh. Okay?
Okay.
The, the Westerville Education Challenge Event that we had last weekend, our 80's event, was a huge success. We raised $50,000. I want to thank many of our teachers that were there and our community members. So it was nice. We can't wait to get it back into our school district and helping the kids. So that's one thing. WEF has a arts coun, wait, WEF, Concord Counseling and the Arts Council of Westerville are hosting an all-star art gala. Do you know the name of it, the art auction coming up? No?
I, I do not know the name.
Sorry. It's coming up on April 21st at Everell Barn. The cool thing about this is from four to six, it's families, so kids can come. And they want artwork from kids, from amateurs and from professional artists. And you can come and you can buy it. And then from 6:00 to 9:30, it's just adults only. So kind of a fun thing. And then the last thing is the Summer Camp Expo and Activities that is March 8th at North, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's always well-attended. Big thing. So that's it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Who else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Westerville Education Foundation. They had a bowl-a-thon this weekend. That was a big success and it was a really great event. So they do that every year in February. It's something to look out for, a lot of fun for people to sign up for.
Thank you.
Not much this evening. I really thoroughly enjoyed the Westerville Education Challenge fundraiser. Had an opportunity to bring my son, he was home for the weekend, which was nice because he got to circulate amongst a lot of old teachers and friends. And it reemphasized for me, as all of these events always do, the strength of our community. I'm learning that in, in, in a way that I never expected as I'm beginning this transition to become an Uptown resident. And, and I'm just encouraged, recently a number of meetings that I've been able to, to have with other citizens of the community, whether it's Neighborhood Bridges, with Rick Bannister, or with Dr. Krendel at Ottervine. And the enthusiasm and the excitement about the Westerville City School District within our community is amazing. And I am constantly surprised, in the best possible way, by the number of organizations, institutions, the city that are stepping up to be a part of, of our educational opportunities and experiences for our kids. It's been a great few months on that topic. So I'm really looking forward to the remainder of this year because we seem to have a very, very good head of steam rolling.
I would add just affirmation to all the comments in these, we go through these announcements really because it's very important what happens in this district and we want to get the word out to you. Thank you to the Boy Scouts, being here tonight. Awesome to have you. And thank you for affirming us, really. We should be affirming you, but thank you for affirming what we do. And to those of you retiring and those of you launching out in the world, we salute you. And those coming in, there, there you go. You're just sending them in and sending them out. Welcome aboard. We're excited to have you all here. I would like to conclude with a statement to the Westerville community from your Westerville Board of Education. This is a statement that we call "A District of Grace and Hope." We live in a world that is increasingly strident and divisive, and communicates anger more than acceptance and accusation, more than love. Out of this culture, our students have come to learn. While our teachers, staff and administrators work very hard to create a welcoming and nurturing environment, we wish to say essentially one thing to our students and their families, to our teachers, staff and administrators. We love you. We accept you. And we will always strive to build a culture and environment of grace and love, nurture and care, in which you can learn deeply, grow exponentially, and know that you are accepted. Essentially, we want you to know, we have your back. Beyond the world in which we live, there is the world we are attempting to create, one in which all voices can be heard, all opinions can be expressed, debate without rancor can be explored. And still, we are determined to see the humanness in one another. We pledge to you, dear students and families, teachers, staff and administrators, even in our differences, we will strive to be a uniting and caring force. So we welcome you to the Westerville City School District, one and all. It is a place where you belong. The school board will meet in regular session on Monday, February 27, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. and Monday, March 13, 2017, in this Early Learning Center. At this time, I will ask for a motion so that we may go into executive session for the purpose of conference with attorney involving pending or imminent court action. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Bart, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. We will now move into executive session.